Call to order this meeting for Monday, January 27th, 2020. Carl, can I get a roll call vote for attendance, please?
Councilmember Remley, Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Reif.
Here.
Johnson.
Bunsonus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Here. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'm going to need a motion to approve last week's minutes for January 21st, 2020's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Rux and a second from Olson. Since we have a member on the telephone, we'll do everything as a voice vote here today, a roll call vote with Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ronain.
Hi.
Lunsman.
Hi.
Reif.
Hi.
Bunsonus.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
Rux.
Hi.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Hi. Motion does carry. We'll approve those minutes. Next thing on the agenda is the proclamation of Aberdeen Catholic Schools Week for January 26th through February 1st, 2020. Official proclamation of the City of Aberdeen in South Dakota, whereas Catholic schools touch the future in many communities by furnishing our leaders of tomorrow with basic human, moral, and spiritual foundations, and whereas Catholic schools strengthen the future of the community and the nation by keeping viable the right of freedom of religion under law, and whereas Catholic education has demonstrated its ability to contribute to the state's welfare throughout its history by raising levels of knowledge, competence, and experience, and whereas the Catholic grade in high schools in South Dakota are educating thousands of citizens during the school year 2019 and '20, and whereas Catholic schools throughout the nation will be recognized during Catholic Schools Week with the theme Catholic Schools Learn, Serve, Lead, Succeed, in recognition of their contributions to the American society. Therefore, I Travis Shawnaman, Mayor of the City of Aberdeen in South Dakota, do hereby proclaim January 26th through February 1st, 2020, as Aberdeen Catholic Schools Week. Catholic Schools Learn, Serve, Lead, Succeed, in Aberdeen, South Dakota, in recognition of the contributions that Catholic Schools made in the past, are making today, and will continue to make in the future of South Dakota. And we have a guest here today, Mr. Reif, why don't you tell us what you've got?
Well, I just want to thank you, Mayor Shawnaman, and of course, the city council and his recognition. We think we have a very viable alternative to education here in Aberdeen. It's reflected with our high ACT scores, and of course, we have that faith aspect. So we think we're a real option for people. And this week, as we celebrate Catholic Schools Week, we would just like to invite everybody and anybody in the city to come and check us out. It's highlighted by Bishop Swain coming up from Sioux Falls in probably one of his last official duties as bishop of the Sioux Falls Catholic Diocese. He will be leading mass at the high school at 1:30 in the afternoon, and so I wanted to extend that invitation as well. And for anybody, for any reason, if you want to come check us out, stop in up at the high school where the main offices are, and we'll answer any questions and show you around if we want to, or if we need to.
And what day was it that the bishop will be leading mass?
Wednesday of this week.
Sounds great. Does anyone have any questions? Otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm going to pass this thing around. You can grab it if you wish to leave a little bit early.
No, he wants to hang around.
It'll be thrilling. Next, we've got open forum. We're delighted to have Attorney General Jason Roundsburg present on the drug situation in South Dakota, so I'm going to ask that he take the floor when he's got a moment here.
Mayor, I think I can start here. We also have a representative from the Brown County State's Attorney, Chief Deputy Ernest Thompson, if you want to come up as well. First of all, I want to say thank you to our Attorney General for coming here tonight and being part of this presentation. I contacted him and let him know of what we're going to be discussing, and without hesitation, he came here to provide input to what we're going to be talking about tonight, the illegal drug problem. And I also want to say thank you to the Brown County State's Attorney for all the work they do on a daily basis, working with us and the things that they do. This presentation tonight is the first part of a good question that Councilman Bunsonus asked about a while back on what can we do? You know, we have a continuing problem in our community and all around the country with the illegal drug situation. And I appreciate that question. Thank you for asking that. What more can we do? I provided you some statistics. These are preliminary things that we're going to be presenting in our annual report that you'll see later on in the year. But I provided some things that have some relevance, and you can see that in 2019, our overall incidents were up from the previous year, and our drug-related calls were up from 2018. And then there are some other comparative categories that show that we have a continuing problem with the illegal drug problem, and its relevance to a lot of different other situations, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's the mental health situation we find ourselves in, and the property crime. So there's a lot of serious crime that happens in Aberdeen that affects people's lives. There's a lot of property-related crime, and it continues to occur. And I thank you for the opportunity to present to this, and I think the Attorney General, as we're entering in this legislative session, has some things of relevance and maybe can help you connect some ideas on what you can do to help. I do want to say on one of these pages, I present you here with the resources you've given us. I think as a city council, you've been very supportive. You give us the best resources. We're fully staffed, and we have a very engaged department. So everything that you've given us have put us in a position to address the community's problems and succeed. So if it's a question of can we give you more, you've given us enough, and we're adequately staffed and have the equipment and the resources to address the problems. I'm very appreciative of that. So with that, we can talk more about the stats later or the resources we have, but I will turn you over to our Attorney General and State's Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for that introduction, Jason Roundsburg. Do not look at it if you try to say it, but Jason Roundsburg and I, the Attorney General of South Dakota, and I'm going to start off and try and be very concise, so give you more time to ask questions if you want, but my office handles a lot of things. We're going to talk a lot about crime and drugs tonight, but I did want to hit some of the highlights of some of the other stuff that our office does. We handle all the appeals for all the state's attorney's offices. I'm in charge of DCI. We have 54 agents around the state and in your communities to help you with those forensic-type crimes. They're the lead investigators on any of the major cases in our state, and they do an excellent job. And we teach them at the academy, along with all of law enforcement. We run three classes a year of 48 students per class, and we're looking at a fourth class. I mean, as the tempo has increased and the turnover has been more over the last couple of years, but I think we run a very efficient academy, and we have members from all over the state. There are 11 members on our law enforcement training board that oversee that. And in June and July, we take a break as we retool and look at the curriculum and get ready for the next session. We also handle consumer protection, so when people are getting scammed, or what the latest scam is, and I've tried to put some emphasis on that as I've come into office and try and get the word out. We updated our consumer protection handbook. It hadn't been updated in about five years, and we're also just trying to inform the public, inform the public, because many members of law enforcement have helped us and helped people in your communities on these common scams, where my granddaughter is in jail in Texas. Please send money. Well, we encourage people, obviously, to go talk to law enforcement and find out if that's true or not before they send off the money, and we've stopped a lot of people from sending off money that they shouldn't. And I've obviously warned public, if anybody's asking you for a gift card in any fashion, please pause and ask someone, either my office or your local law enforcement, that when somebody's asking you to send a gift card in any fashion, that's probably a telltale sign that they're trying to scam you in some fashion. Obviously, civil, and then we have our full crime lab of forensics as well, right there onsite at the academy location there in Pier. But yes, criminal, that's what I mainly came to talk with you about. First off, I want to thank you for your support. I looked at the chief's statistics and things here, and you know, two drug canine handlers. Some communities have rejected that, saying it's not our problem. They're going to bring us more business. Well, I want you to have more business in the sense I want you to take these people off the streets, because we're, I came in and I said, we're going to be tough on crime, and I want to get it out of your community. I want people to tell us who the dealers are, and so we can move up the chain. And I've tried to do that, you know, in my administration here, and we are working with DCI, FBI, DEA, and reaching back into Mexico on some of these cases. And we've had very positive results, and I think you have a great team here with Ernest and Chris, local support, and we're there to support them from the top down. Whatever we can do to help support them and our local police departments, I want to do, and I want to be out in your community and be as many places as I can, finding out what you need. And so I'm bringing a couple bills this year. I've also, the governor and some other legislators are bringing some bills. We are very supportive of the governor's treatment plan. She has approximately $3.5 to $3.7 million in drug treatment. I don't think we can spend enough on drug treatment. I think that they're, we're trying to help these people get off of that, and I am supportive of the drug courts and stuff, but I also have always said that you need a balanced approach, and I think you have to have the stick as well as the carrot. So last year, you might know that I tried to repeal presumptive probation, because I think it is a failed system. And so this year, while that didn't pass, we did generally a lot of attention, a lot of support. We're trying to edge away at it a little bit with SB 6 and SB 7. One, SB 6 is regarding getting people to cooperate. One of the downfalls of SB 70 is they know going into the courtroom that they've got a deal, because it's written into the statutes. There's no incentive to cooperate any longer with law enforcement, and our numbers have dried up dramatically in getting help from them, because they know they're going to get out, they're going to get presumptive probation, there's no reason to turn in their dealer, because they're going to go get their fix as soon as they got through that stressful situation of getting arrested the first time. This bill, we would add an aggravating circumstance. What does that mean? That means a presumptive probation. You walk in, you get presumed you're going to get probation, but if the judge can find an aggravating factor in some fashion, they could order some incarceration. Well, the problem that has also resulted from FD 70 is, is that we don't send people to the penitentiary as much, we send them to county jails, so you get to pay the cost, 30, 60, 90, 180 days of county jail time. And so that has shifted the burden a lot from the state to you. And we want to have more cooperation, because I want to move up the chain. I want to get the people that give us the information to move up the chain. Second is SB 7. I call it the three-strikes plan. Many things in our criminal justice system already. A DUI, if you get a third DUI, it's a felony. If you get a third simple assault, it can be a felony. So this, on the third conviction for presumptive probation-type offense, you lose the presumption. Now, the judge can still have the discretion to give you probation, depending on the facts and circumstances of the case, but you just lose that presumption. So I think that we want to incentivize that people are changing their course of behavior in some fashion, and that they want to work with law enforcement. So I would ask for your support. I know that the Sioux Falls City Council passed a resolution to repeal presumptive probation completely. They know that it's a failed system, and I would ask you to take a look at that, but also just take a look at these specific bills. And there's one other bill I'd like to talk about just briefly. It's still in the criminal justice arena. It's a missing persons clearinghouse. Last year, the legislature passed the Murdered Missing Indigenous Women Act, but they did not supply me much money or much names. So obviously, it's hard to find someone if you don't know who's missing. We found a lady in Pier, had been gone about two years, and nobody had reported her missing. So obviously, it's hard to find someone you don't know that you're looking for. But I've tried to reach out to all of our Native American friends, and I've been to, and either they, I went to their reservation, or they've come to me on five out of the nine, and we're in discussions with the others to feed me your names, tell me who is missing, and we will try to find them. This database enhances that system that we have already. You know, a law enforcement officer can get some name and some information. We'll be able to have pictures and more biographical information that we'll be able to share with the public. And so I would ask you to also have your representatives support that. It did just pass out of the Senate, so I was encouraged by that, but it is SB 27. And so if you talk to your legislators, I would ask you to help with that. There was no opposition in the Senate. I think it's a very positive major, but I take nothing for granted when we go through the session process. So we are also trying to reform or look at bills all the time, and legislators give us to make them the best, because ultimately, my office will defend those bills that have come out of the legislature. So we try to make the best bill and go forward from there. So as kind of a broad overview, I can ask, answer questions about these topics I've mentioned, or if you have others, I'd be happy to address them, and if you have questions, I guess we'll go from there.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to start with Dave. He brought up the topic in the first place, hoping to get some clarification on various drug problems throughout the city.
Sure. Well, the first one I want to start with is, last year, I viewed a video over at the police department that showed officers with, talking to an individual, and after a while, that situation escalated by the individual, turned into the individual spitting on a sheriff, headbutting a police officer, telling the police officer that I'm going to kill you, and my understanding is that individual got off, didn't serve any time. And so am I correct in that, Chief?
If it's the situation we had, I believe on that situation, the person was held on an intoxicative hold, so I'm not sure there was any prosecution on that, and I can't remember if that was the person that was on probation or not, so.
Okay. My understanding is that they walked. We talk about protecting our police officers, and that's not protecting our police officers. So what can we do to let the public know, let the, you know, the criminal understand that they need to respect our officers, and they're going to, you know, ultimately pay a price for that type of behavior?
Well, I guess I don't know the individual facts, and it sounds like we're talking about that a little bit, but I do believe that we just need to send a strong message that, yes, we are going to protect law enforcement, and we are swift in responding. If there's an officer-involved shooting in some fashion, we get a report out within 30 days. I'll have one out yet this week. We had a shooting in Rapid City. We try to be as transparent as possible with the public and tell them and inform them of what's going on, especially in situations like that. But without knowing the individual facts, I don't know if I can answer fully. Maybe Ernest can tell us a little more about the facts of that case.
I don't know that particular case, but one thing I do want to comment on when it comes to offenses against law enforcement, simple assault against law enforcement or aggravated assault against law enforcement. We do have a victim specialist in our office, and we treat law enforcement officers as a victim in that case, and although I don't know the specific facts of that case, I do know that that victim specialist will reach out to, and we will have a meeting with that officer, just as we would any other victims under Marcy's law, and that officer will be involved in the final resolution of the case. That particular case, I don't know the facts off the top of my head, but I do know that our policy is to meet with the officer and work with law enforcement, just as if they were any other victim of an assault or of a crime, and they participate in the resolution and give their feedback to the resolution. So again, while I don't know that particular case, I'm confident to say that the officer involved was informed and participated through the process on the resolution.
And I guess I would add to that, that my predecessor had made that determination, and I agree with it, but the officers can invoke Marcy's law, just like any other victim, and we've treated those cases in that manner.
Maybe we need to get the specifics of the end of that case and give them to you, but...
And I'm definitely willing to, yeah. If you can give me the specifics, we'll take a look at them and follow up with you, too.
So have there been cases that an officer has been, you know, verbally assaulted or assaulted, that the individuals have faced any jail time?
I guess we'll have to pull some statistics for you. I mean, I'm sure it has across the state, but we'll...
Okay, all right.
But I will follow up with you.
I want to follow up on that one. So another question, and I'm not going to be any more specific than I was in the last question, okay?
Right.
But I know of an individual that has a student that is under the age of 18, and that individual feels helpless, because that student is going through a lot of drug issues. And there just seems to be that the student has, knows their rights better than anyone on the face of the earth, and we don't seem to be able to help that individual. What are we doing to help, you know, principals, teachers, and families that have these issues going on within their family?
Okay, so we initially, what we were talking about was a bill called SB 70, and that's where it's an adult system, and that gets a lot of attention, because meth, and we talk about it a lot. A few years later, they passed a bill called SB 73, which is basically the juvenile system, and quite frankly, I think it's worse, but it just doesn't get the headlines, because obviously, a lot of the cases are sealed, and you don't get all the details, they're out in the community, as well as meth and stuff of that nature. Your senator, actually Senator Norstrop, tried to bring a bill last year with support of State's Attorney White, and it did not pass, but I think we did get a good discussion going. I know the Fraternal Order of Police, State Headquarters, and the Sioux Falls Chapter are looking to bring some bills to try and tighten that up, to get some more resources, because I do believe that we're failing in that area as well. I think that we need to get, the best chance is addressing these problems early, because that's the whole point of the juvenile system. We want, if you make a mistake, that it's not the end of the world, that we can recover from it, learn from it, and go forward. I do believe that some more reforms are needed, but those take dollars, and we're pressing on those fronts as well. Without some specific examples, I, you know, I can talk generally, but that's kind of where we're, the direction we're heading. We're trying to make some reforms to that as well. It maybe just doesn't get the headlines.
Thank you, Attorney General. Councilman Lunsman has a question for you.
Yes, I know we briefly talked about this in the past, but kind of like to bring it up a little bit more, is on the drug abuse and the mental issues that we're seeing. Some are related, some are starting with one, ending with the other, and some are starting with the other one and ending with a mental health issue, and it's a big problem, you know, and the amount of time we spend for travel to Yankton and to getting help and stuff like that is enormous. What are your plans, or what is the state's plans in order to help ease this for communities?
Well, I think that's part of the problem. We went back to SB 70. We were sold that we were going to get a local control or local thoughts on having mental illness treatment and drug treatment, and that's never materialized, and I think that's prior to the problem of SB 70. The promises that were made were not kept. I've offered some, you know, not just bills, but just talking with the administration. They're looking at how can they improve Yankton for, first off, it's got a beautiful facility, but it's hard to get people staffed there, and, because you can get about the same wages as you do in a nursing home. So as you know, the people in the Human Services Center have some of the worst problems, but they only stay there about a couple weeks on average. As an attorney in Yankton, we quite frankly tell clients, they'd probably be there about two weeks, they get them on the right medication, and they send them back out the door. The worst story I ever heard was an officer out of Corson County drove down to Yankton, dropped the person off, made it to Aberdeen, and they got called to come pick him back up. So between that and West River, you're spending lots of time on the road. There are facilities also in Lincoln County, and so we got two in that part of the state, good coverage, good, but the other parts of the state, I think, do need some more assistance. You've probably heard as I campaigned, I talked about a meth treatment center or meth prison. I think that that should have a mental illness wing, or can we partner with some of the right now existing facilities with either Avera or Sanford? What facilities do they have, especially Center West? Because yes, I do believe we need to cut down on that travel time, and looking at options. We're looking at some of the nursing homes as well, is one of my options. Obviously, if some of these nursing homes fail, and obviously, we do not want them to fail, we want them to succeed, but if they do fail, there you have a facility, and you have people in the community that have invested in that community. Can they go into those communities and save those facilities and make them into meth treatment or mental illness treatment facilities, and try and save some of that infrastructure and save dollars? So we are looking at some of those options like that, and talking with the administration and the legislatures, as they're appropriating money, where can we get the most bang for our buck? But I do believe that is a problem, and we do need more local help, or at least more regional help.
Attorney General, you had mentioned that somewhere between $2 and $3 million was to be used for treatment?
3.5 to 3.7. I don't remember the exact number, it's in that range for sure. The governor has put in her budget address.
Yeah, I guess the question is, how is it administered? How will people actually find it for treatment?
So some of it's going into the existing drug court and/or subdivision courts, I call it. There's a DUI court, veterans courts, there are different subcourts around the state, and so that, I think that's where some of it's going, and the rest is going into DSS. How can they partner with local industries to get people into treatment in those facilities that are not state-run, but they're privately run?
Thank you. And then there were several issues, I think you probably got the same handout that we did from Chief McNeil. A few of these incident reports, namely drug-related calls, mental health, disturbance fight calls, were up pretty significantly from 2015 in the five-year period to 2019, some of them 40% or more. Is that pretty consistent with statewide statistics, or are we alone in these increases in those areas?
No, you are not alone. I saw a headline, oh, it wasn't this Sunday, but about a week ago Sunday, from the Rapid City paper, where they said that they were an all-time high for arrests out there. We're still compiling it for the 2019. It usually comes out March, April timeframe for the statewide statistics. I mean, I'm starting to see some preliminary numbers, but numbers are up across the board, because as this indicates, and I'm seeing statewide, is, you know, not just a drug crime. I adamantly fight back against people that say it's a victimless crime. They are committing assaults on law enforcement, they're committing burglaries, they're committing other things to feed the habit with their drug use. And so I think it's not just a drug victimless crime. I think other crimes, as you see from some of these statistics, are up as well to feed the habit.
Yeah, the Councilmembers. Councilman Rux.
You talked earlier about, in your opening, about missing persons clearinghouse?
Yes.
With that, what do you think has involved with, like, sex trafficking in South Dakota, and the problems that maybe go with that, as well as things or trends you are seeing with that?
I would say that sex trafficking is real in the state, first off. I mean, I get a lot of pushback, oh, we don't see a lot of convictions or crimes. Well, we may charge it under something else, and/or we are working with our federal partners on those, because typically, the sex trafficking is not just within the state, it's crossing state lines, and they have mandatory minimums on these types of things on the federal side. I think that this will also help, and one of the senators did ask a question as it went through the Senate, he's like, how if somebody gets pulled over, how can we enhance their ability to find out if that person's missing, and they maybe can't say anything, you know, they're, you know, held at gunpoint or being trafficked or under the influence of drugs themselves involuntarily? This would enhance that right now. NCIC is the system that can notify the officer on the side of the road. We are building out where we can have authorization to have pictures and biographical information, so I can also do more advisories and alerts when I came in. The office, there's seven people on my website, and they're apparently the same seven people that have been there for five years, and I think that we can obviously do better. I want to get a lot more social media and media attention. I plan to have, in fact, a weekly publication of missing persons and some ideas of that fashion going forward to get more information out quicker. All the statistics and surveys show in the first 48... All the statistics and surveys show in the first 48 to 72 hours is your best chance to get, to find somebody that's gone missing. And so if we can get that information out to the public quicker, we have a better chance of success.
And the second thing I have is, is of course, there was a change in the, at the federal level of vaping and tobacco. As, as of course, we've seen in our reports, that seems to be a thing of underage consumption, of course, going from 18 to 21. Of course, people who are already 18 and smoking could now be illegal. What are your thoughts on that?
Okay, so first off, we entered into, the state entered into a master settlement agreement in 1999. So we get approximately $25 million a year from the tobacco industry in, in furtherance of that settlement agreement. One of the bills I didn't talk about was SB 25. We are required by that agreement to do certain maintenance of that to stay in compliance, counting cigarettes and how much are, is distributed throughout our state. And we're doing that, and we're doing some updates on that. We did pass that bill through the Senate. But vaping, and I want to talk about the 18 to 21. So first off, the federal government has raised the limit from 18 to 21. The state government has not yet, but there's a bill by your Representative Perry here that is address, seeking to address that gap now. We've advised merchants, they still have the right to refuse and to sell to anyone. And so I think that's the guidance that they're mostly following right now, because it is still, is now a federal crime. There was intention to have it implemented by about September, but they waved through some of the rulemaking process. So it is still 18 for the state, it's 21 for the federal government. I think that will be resolved, or we're going to have a good discussion about it here in the session, so I would say stay tuned on that fashion. Back to vaping. The industry is trying to address it, and then obviously, there are some discussions about especially flavors, to eliminate the flavors. We're still learning, and that means all of Attorney Generals, we have actually a study group about vaping specifically, and we've, we've been joint, we've joined into some investigations specifically geared towards vaping, and we're learning more and more about it all the time. Because it's not just affecting your lungs like smoke you think of, it affects your throat. It's the aerosol that is produced. One of the things that's killing people, though, is going back to marijuana. If you think of marijuana in the 60s, it was a five. Now it's a 25. For vaping pods, it's a concentrate of between 70 and 80%. So that's why these kids are getting sick, and this is why they, one of the reasons they're getting sick and also dying, because they're using marijuana in a super-concentrated form, and it's quite frankly, killing them. We're still learning. There's some talk, some believe that it is a way to cessation off of cigarette smoking, but I think you're trading one vice for another. So we will see where that goes, but we're still studying it, but we are actively studying it, and we're studying it as, in a bipartisan way. Republicans, Democrats, Attorney Generals, they have a specific subgroup for tobacco based out of the master settlement agreement. From that, we've made a subgroup for studying of vaping, because it's new and clearly wasn't covered by this agreement we made 20 years ago.
Thank you. Is there any other questions that we have here from the council, the Attorney General? Otherwise?
I want to.
I have two questions.
Josh, go ahead.
My first question, first of all, I apologize for not being there in person, but my, my first question would be, you talked about the Sioux Falls City Council repealing pregrun probation. And my question is, is that, would that be more of a symbolic gesture, or would that be something that would hold some sort of judicial weight?
I think that was more of a symbolic gesture. They gave their priorities for the legislative session, and that was one of a number of items in that package. I don't remember, quite frankly, I didn't focus on the other ones, that's the one I cared about, and I don't know what else they talked about, but they did encourage the legislature to repeal presumptive probation.
Sure. And I guess my next question would be, I just, just read a statistic, and I'm hoping it's accurate, because I'm going to repeat it. But it says, last year, in our country, in 2019 roughly, 30,000 people died from fentanyl use. I guess my question is, how are we preparing for the, I guess, inevitable introduction of fentanyl into our state and in particular, to our community?
So yes, we have fentanyl in our state, but obviously not at those record numbers. I would start first with, we were briefed by the Michigan Highway Patrol that they have a new substance called carfentanil, and you cannot take it with, and, and live. It's 30 times more potent than fentanyl itself. You have to cut it with something else, or it will kill you. So if anybody ever hears of carfentanil, do not take it, you will die. Second, obviously, fentanyl is bad enough. They, they use, between carfentanil and fentanyl, they use it as a elephant tranquilizer. So think about the size and weight of an elephant compared to a man or a woman. You lots of times are still cutting it or putting it with another drug so that they get you hooked on it. And fentanyl can kill you with one dose. It's also used in lethal injections in some states. So you're putting that substance, which could kill you, into your body, and not just a one time. You get addicted to it like meth. This is extremely dangerous. We are working with the, again, the DEA and the FBI and the US Attorney's Office a lot, seeking out those, and we are very hard on fentanyl-related crimes, and they do have mandatory minimums on those as well. So a lot of times, the DCI will work the cases with those agencies and hand it off to those agencies so that we make sure to take those people out of our community and our state for hard time. There is no good that comes from fentanyl.
So I think we've got two more quick questions before you lose your voice here. Councilman Bunsonis, did you have?
Either at the state level or at the county level, are there any programs that have been effective in helping students stay away from drugs or rehabbing them?
Well, I, I guess I would, I talked to Councilman Olson a little bit before. The DARE program is still out there, and it still does work, and I've tried to, I don't know, I did a half a dozen or more graduations myself personally this last year, and to encourage young people as they're learning, you know, it sounds sexy or cool, some of these things to try, and you're trying to encourage them never to use, because if you never use it, that's the best for them and the best for me, because I don't have to spend any resources or track you down. And, you know, they don't ruin their lives in that fashion. That's one program. There, obviously, different schools have different things that they have, I can't remember the one in Howard, they had a similar to DARE-type program, but it had a different name. But they're all based on the same principles of not using drugs, identifying it early to people, and try and get that out there. We've done videos, I know myself and the governor have gone into different schools beyond the DARE programs and tried to just talk with them, have assemblies and, you know, and just inform them. We did some surveys as I was coming into office. We teach kids a lot about wearing their seatbelt, we teach them a lot about don't drink and drive, but we didn't talk a lot about meth, surprisingly. And so we're trying to up that especially awareness.
Also to kind of give some acknowledgement to NSU here locally, I know with students and other first-time offenders on, on low-level drinking underage or even possession or ingestion of marijuana, the NSU program is effective. And oftentimes, either through a deferred prosecution or even through the courts, that'll be a requirement if they are of that age. And the good part about NSU's program is you don't have to be a student to sign up for and participate in it. And that has been effective as much as any treatment is for the person who wants to hear it. Getting those young people into that program has been effective for those who actually want it to be effective.
I guess I would, I thought of in the meantime, was Teen Challenge, and that out of Brookings and/or Sioux Falls area, and I think it's a very, very positive program. It's limited in scope, but they do help the people that they can, so.
And the sake of time, we'll limit it to one more, but we had a hand from the crowd. Ms. Ronain, did you have a question for the Attorney General?
Yeah, opioid crisis, are there any plans or provisions, if any, that specifically?
Yes. Okay, I have weekly, if not daily, calls on opioids. We, we are working together, it is another bipartisan effort. A number of Attorney Generals were working together to what can we find for a solution? So we're, Purdue Pharma was probably the first one that you heard about, that's where OxyContin comes from. And they went, all summer were threatening to go into bankruptcy and eventually did, but we, we entered into an agreement, a preliminary structure agreement with them, and now we're talking to the other companies to try and go along the same lines. So can we get product to wean people off of the opioids that they're on, and how to deliver it? So it's cost benefit there, but also can we get dollars back to our state that are specifically earmarked towards opioid treatment in some fashion? And then some will probably be more left general for the legislature to, to manage, but we are in ongoing negotiations with all of the major opioid providers and distributors and, and manufacturers. I guess I would say stay tuned, but I would think a settlement is not imminent, but sometime in 2020, we'll probably reach into a settlement with a number of these different providers. Opioids is a problem in our state, but we're really considered a meth state. Meth is our drug of choice sadly. States like West Virginia, Ohio, where more concentrated use of opioids than we were, but it's still a problem here. And trying to wean people off of it with some of the structure that we built into some of these agreements that we're looking at. We don't want just a pile of cash to go to the legislature, because it may or may not get used that way as the tobacco money was in some states. And so we've actually forcing them to provide product and to get people off and the distribution network. So it's geared towards the problem.
I want to thank both of you gentlemen for your time and coming down, travel time. Really appreciate you bringing light to these subjects for us, so.
Thank you.
One more thing I, I think I do have to say is that we are fortunate here in Brown County and Aberdeen. I know Chief McNeil's statistics that he put out that include the resources. Not every community has the resources dedicated to the Drug Task Force and the Detection Dogs. So I just have to throw that out there, that we are lucky to be here, and that it's a priority enough that the resources are given to law enforcement. And we're also fortunate in that the law enforcement agencies between Brown County, the city, and the state are remarkably cooperative, and we pester the AG's office on a daily basis and meet with representatives of both the county and the city law enforcement on a daily basis. And the cooperation level is, again, fortunate that we are here where we are.
That's great to hear. Councilman Bunsonis?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just can't be quiet, but, so is there anything that this council can do other than providing the resources to the police, other than calling our representatives and senators? Is there anything else that we can do to be proactive in, in the, the drug situation?
Well, I would include that we have multiple branches of government, so I would ask you, you know, to keep informed the governor's office as well. But also talk to the people in your community, and what do they have for resources? How can they assist with this problem? What businesses and industries do you have that maybe ought to volunteer or provide at a cost-level treatment? And see, some communities, since they were not getting help from the state, did start their own drug treatment-type program on a limited scale. I mean, you gotta, you guys have a budget as well, I definitely understand that. But can you provide in your community? Because obviously, the best results, I do believe, are still in your community, because you can be closer to family and your support network, because no matter where you go for treatment, you come out of that. And obviously, if you only have the drug dealer friends and users that you had when you went in, you're more susceptible to going back into that. And so I would ask you to talk to people in your community, and who can they have for solutions? And I think you mentioned some of them with this university, so that's encouraging.
I would say the same thing as far as communication. Drugs is one of those problems that festers in the darkness. So communication, we do have some programs here in Brown County that do merit and have yielded results. We, we do have a DUI court, we do have a drug court, we're constantly looking at other things, but I would encourage you to find out more about those programs. You can attend DUI court, it's open court like any other court. You can come, you can sit into DUI court, you can sit in at drug court and see what happens in those treatment courts. I know Judge McGarrett and Judge Portra are always open to answer questions about those, and then communicate what you see after you, you find out about those treatment courts.
And I guess I would just add, maybe we can provide you with stats and details and information about all, any type of drug or the crimes, you know? And when you're out in your elections or in your speaking engagements that you have, add it to the list, you know, and say, hey, here's some of the things that I've learned about. I, I had not heard about carfentanil until we were briefed, you know, and we learned about it, and we've been, you know, putting it out there, because from the, what, like I said, they, you cannot use it and live, so please don't use it. Lastly, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for inviting me and for your support of law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming.
Drive safe.
One thing I'm good at is driving.
Next up, we've got consent counter items. We've got items A through D, the routine city business. Can I take a motion to approve these items?
Move.
Second.
Got a motion from Lunsman and a second from Rux. Does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns about any of these items? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move right along to new business. We've got item A, hearing on the transfer of the retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license with video lottery from Lobes Investments Incorporated, DBA Gas and Goods, 1106 South Fifth Street to Ochenta Incorporated, DBA Gas and Goods, 1106 South Fifth Street. Possible approval of the transfer. Can I get a motion to make that transfer?
Second.
Got a motion from Ronain and a second from Lunsman. Does anyone have any discussion points to put forward on the transfer of this license? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a hearing on special two-day retail on-sale liquor license on January 31st through February 1st for Act Two Incorporated, DBA Aberdeen Community Theater at 417 South Main Street. Possible approval of the two-day retail license. Can I get a motion to make that approval?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion from Rux and a second from Olson. Does anyone have any discussion to be had on this event? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the application for a community event permit for the Shell's Blockfest at Slackers, 319 South Main Street on February 21st, 2020, with a request to use three parking spaces in the front of the business for the event. Possible approval or denial of the request? And I see we've got Mr. Haplo, if you'd make your way to the podium perhaps? And then we wanted to lead this thing off. City Attorney Ron had a few things to, to brief us on.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to identify for the council that ordinarily, these matters are routinely approved, and the thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is that this is a community event permit that appears to benefit just a single business on, on our main street. And again, I'm not supporting or opposing the, the permit application, I'm just simply wanted to bring that to your attention. We've had others in the past where you might have a cooperative venture or event involving a number of businesses, and, and the only reason I'm bringing this to your specific attention is that we're dealing with one business here wanting to utilize three parking spaces for a period of approximately six hours. But I thought it would merit your individual consideration.
Move, do approve. Second.
Got a motion from Ronain and a second from Rux. Does anyone have any questions for either Mr. Haplo, who's here to represent the business, or our city attorney? Otherwise, Carl, give us a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Thanks for coming on. Jelly, thanks for making, bye. Saw your letter in there. Next, we've got appointment of Danny McQuillan to the parking board, possible approval to appoint Danny to the parking board. approval to appoint Danny to the Parking Board for a term ending in December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Move, approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Bunsonis and a second from Lunsman. Any, won't have anything to bring up on that point? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote on that appointment, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got appointments for Olaf Hansen and Kyle Walls to the Downtown Business Improvement District, Board of Directors. Possible approval to appoint Olaf Hansen to the Downtown Bid Board of Directors for a term ending in December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Same term for Kyle Walls. Can I get a motion for those appointments?
Move, approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Olson and a second from Rux. Does anyone have anything to contribute on that topic? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the bid on powered activated carbon for water treatment department. Possible approval to award the activated carbon bid to Donau Carbon US LLC in the amount of fifty-nine point eight cents per pound, and authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign all necessary documents after the approval by the city attorney. Here, to present, we've got Mr. Bob Brown. Bob, would you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, we did performance testing on our carbon to determine which would give us the best value. We also had to waive a bid irregularity. The low bid actually gave inadvertently gave a five percent bid bond instead of the required ten percent. But we felt that with, it was a proven product we've had in the past. It was the low bid that we would waive the irregularity for the Delio carbon.
Move, do approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Ronain and a second from Bunsonis to, to approve that bid. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brown while he's here? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Thanks for coming in, Bob. I appreciate it. Next, we've got the pay request number two, Public Safety Generator Quest Development and Construction for the amount of fifty thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Possible approval to pay the quest two in the amount of fifty thousand, four seventy-four sixty-eight to Quest for the work on Aberdeen Public Safety Generator Project. Robin, would you tell us about that, please?
They've done a lot of the outside work, have added an upsized gas line to the system so that we can put in a gas-powered generator. At this point, the generator schedule, I believe, is sometime in February to have that installed. Then there will be some outside work to be done with the sidewalks to be replaced, and some of them will be jacked up, so to speak, so that we can get the water away from the building. Right now, they're inverted, and the water's running back toward the, the facility. That's something that has caused us grief in the past, and we want to correct that for a long-term fix. So I guess the chief can talk about how the project's gone so far.
I think it's moving along really well. Probably the biggest thing, not too long ago, was the, the build of the gas meter. So we went without hot water for a little bit, but we adapted to that, and I think things are moving along. And this mild weather, I think, helps in general, too, with the project. So we're thankful and looking forward to having that generator and closing the project out. So, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Motion from Olson and a second from Bunsonis. Does anyone have any questions with the city engineer or the chief of police while they have the topic on their minds? Otherwise, Carl, give us a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city's bill list for January twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty. Can I get a motion to pay the bills, please?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Rux and a second from Lunsman. Anyone have any questions on any of these particular bills? We have nothing new to add since, since this bill's list has been committed. I will ask Carl to do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Abstain.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Abstain.
Mayor Shawman?
Abstain, motion does carry. Bills will be paid. Next, we've got city manager's report from Mr. Glander. Lynn, what have you got?
I would just like you to know, next week, in case you have any inquiries, Robin's going to do a report on a traffic study for Melgar Road as far as signalization. And I just wanted you to know about that, so you're prepared to ask any questions.
Does everybody else get as many questions as I do on there? That's a top topic. Melgar Road signals? That guy does. Boy, people like the idea of traffic signals. All right, what else?
That's, that's it at this time. Thank you.
So how many inquiries do you get? A couple?
Oh, I bet it doesn't. So that seems like a lot, I guess, when you're talking about recurring questions that are coming up.
I mean, it, it's usually the same people asking, you know, several times, but they do ask, so.
I have to make my way onto that road every morning, and it's about getting up a little earlier.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I'll tell them next time somebody inquires. Most of the people concerned in the Lawson Street area, with the high school traffic, that gets to be an awfully busy area. A lot of backup.
It wasn't so bad until we put a nice housing subdivision south of the road.
There you go. Hands of growth. Does anyone else have anything to contribute before we adjourn? Please, chief, what have you got?
I just want to say thank you again for asking that question. What can we help with? The little drug problem and the attention you gave this tonight and the questions you gave to our state's attorney and attorney general. I appreciate that. So the next thing we're going to be talking about to address that question that you had is our mental health concerns. And we entered into a really good partnership with Northeastern Mental Health. The sheriff's office hugely contributed. But that's the next thing we're going to be talking about, is the state of the mental health problem, and something that we kind of designed to help people in crisis and to help the officers and deputies in the field. So we'll be scheduling that with the city manager in the future, bringing some guests in for that as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
It was a great discussion all around, so thanks, Dave, for kicking that thing off. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please.
Move.
Second.
Motion from Bunsonis and a second from Olson. Carl, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.